Welcome to the City Williamsport City Council Meeting of May 9th, 2019. Please rise for an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we ask you to bless this city, its citizens and its visitors. Bless those of us who have been chosen to lead the city and help us to make thoughtful and professional and far sighted decisions as we seek to continue to make Williamsport a healthy, safe and prosperous place to live, work and play. And finally, Lord, please protect those who protect us, both here in our city, across this nation and abroad. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated April 25th, 2019. Is there a motion in a second to approve those minutes?
No move.
Second.
Here a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next, we move on our agenda to the limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we can move on to the next item, was a presentation by Chief Hackman of our new city firefighters.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, staff and citizens at large. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that our three new candidates or cadets have made it through their long agonizing weeks at Hack, going through the fire academy, whip them into shape. They're just now facing up their two weeks of daylight and they will go on shift starting next week. We're proud of them. They all graduate in the top percentile of the class, which Williamsport always does. It's what we breed up here. I would introduce them, the three of them as they come up. I really don't really have a whole lot more to say than I'm proud of them. Every new guy we bring on with the replacement, it's that turnover, it's that that new feeling, you know, that I got this shiny new firefighter smell. So, we're going to do real well. And as the turnover goes, the culture starts changing within the fire department, which is a huge plus. And so, as we move on here, gentlemen, welcome aboard. Proud of you, so are your families, I'm sure, and your long career ahead of you starts. So, we'll start off with, as they came on, Lee Arbogas, my first firefighter on the department. Lee's a Muncie boy originally. He comes from my alma mater, so he comes on the department with volunteer experience, which is huge. The other two gentlemen with him did not. They both benefited greatly by being with Lee. I'm sure they leaned on him, while they can also showed some of the muscle during class. So, again, we've got a great team here. Second gentleman, Chris Beringer. Chris has a long history of working with all over the place, but mostly his big deal was with special Olympics, right, Chris? And he has his own little family at home waiting for him, so, like I said, get these guys off all week and back on a shift. Dad gets back home with the kids. And finally, Mark Brawls. Mark went through the first set of interviews. We went over him to go to the second round, and meanwhile, Mark joined the local volunteer fire department to try and get some, get in there and try and get a little insight and got a couple of weeks into that department, and we yanked him out and put him in the academy. So, he made a great decision there. So, we made a great decision all together with these three gentlemen. So, hopefully, we'll be back here at the end of the year and doing this all over again. So, other than that, our Williamsport's new firefighters.
Congratulations. Stay safe.
Gentlemen, before you step out, just on behalf of City Council, let me say publicly then, to welcome you to the City of Williamsport and thank you for your willingness to contribute to the safety and the well-being of our citizens. We hope you a safe, most importantly, long and maybe not quite prosperous career, but the city is an important place to all of us, and we put it in your hands for your responsibilities to help keep us the place that we love and live and work and play in. So, all I ask is that you take that responsibility seriously and do your best, whatever duty calls, to make sure that everybody makes it home safe at the end of the day. So, thank you again. Any other comments from members of council?
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson.
I would just say that recently, we honored our fire department for risking their lives, and it is a serious job, and we surely appreciate your desire to take this on, to be a part, and we know that you'll be part of a team that is top notch and you'll be trained, you've already been trained well, but that training will continue, and we surely thank you for risking what you may. And so, we tip our hats to you and we honor you for that. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Thank you again. Next item on the agenda is a resolution honoring the Lycoming County Law Association.
A resolution honoring Lycoming County Law Association.
Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Thank you. If Representatives of Law Association would join me, please. It's kind of fun in this seat that I'm in to be able to come down here every once in a while and recognize some great organizations and great individuals within our community. And so, it is tonight that it's my privilege to read the following resolution. Whereas on December 1st, 1869, a group of distinguished Lycoming County attorneys recognized the need to promote kind and social relations, professional courtesy and urbanity to its members and to assist them in acquiring legal knowledge and correct practice, and petitioned to incorporate the Lycoming Law Association. Whereas this year, the Lycoming Law Association is celebrating its 150th anniversary of its existence. Whereas the first president of the Lycoming Law Association was Robert Fleming, and the association had just 13 charter members attending that first meeting. Whereas Christian Fry, there he is, was also at that first meet, no, that's not what it says at all, is serving the Lycoming Law Association as its 118th president, and the association has approximately 200 members. Whereas throughout its history, the Lycoming Law Association provided valuable services and resources to both members and the community. Whereas the Lycoming Reporter was established as the legal journal of the Lycoming County in 1949, and its first editor was Malcolm Muir, many of us knew, who served in that capacity for 20 years. Whereas the Lycoming Reporter publishes weekly and includes legal notices and summaries of the opinions issued by the Lycoming County Court of Common Pleas. Whereas this year, the Lycoming Reporter is celebrating its 70th anniversary of its existence, and its current editor is Gary Weber, and current business manager is Michelle Fry. There we go. Whereas this year, the Lycoming Law Association Foundation, the charitable wing of the Lycoming Law Association, is celebrating its 30th year of its existence. Whereas the Lycoming Law Association Foundation provides financial support to the legal aid office and provides funding for the worthwhile law-related community projects and activities. Running out of breath. Whereas the Lycoming Law Association Foundation to date has provided more than $93,000 toward providing free legal services to residents of Lycoming County, more than $17,000 towards preserving, providing access to legal materials for the public, over $11,000 towards training attorneys and other service providers in different areas of the law, and $7,000 to fund legal education trial teams for high school students. Now, therefore, the City of Williamsport congratulates the Lycoming Law Association, the Lycoming Reporter and the Lycoming Law Association Foundation for these notable achievements and directs that I give this document, once it's supported by my colleagues on council, to representatives of the Lycoming Law Association. So, that's quite a record of achievement and history, and I think the members of the Law Association over its 150 years' history have absolutely been critical to the development of our city and its progress over those many years. And so, it's my pleasure and honor then to be able to represent council in recognizing that long history tonight. So, congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
I open it up for comments or questions from members of council.
I really want to thank you for the gift. This is really going to come in handy at home. It's a gavel.
See how those fly.
Do you think we should introduce who everyone is?
Yes, I'm, in fact, are you speaking on behalf of the Law Association as its president?
Sure. Yes, I'll start by introducing everybody, among which we have four past presidents of the association. We have Rick Baldies on my left, Jen Heverly, Michelle Fry next to me, who is our executive director, Gary Weber behind me, John Petrovita, Angela Lavecchio, Bill Carlucci, and of course, you're not a member of our city. Just like to thank you all for this resolution. It means a lot to our association, and we're very proud of our history and this achievement of 150 years in existence and serving the legal community and the community at large. So, thank you.
I think it's, it was very far sighted of the legal community to organize that long ago, when the area was just developing really and finding an identity. And so, to have that, that really helps to bring structure to a community, and obviously that helped build the foundation of everything we see today. So often, we look back here on issues we're dealing with in the city, like the levy and things like that, infrastructure, but to recognize a group that had forebears who really helped build this, the underlying structure of the community as far as people and relating to each other, whether it's inside or outside of court, is an important part of life. So, I applaud you all for dedicating your lives and careers to that and what you bring to the table today, and we appreciate what you do.
Actually, I have one small question. How many, how many members did the association have when it was originally incorporated? Does anyone know?
So, 13 charter members.
13 charter members? Okay. That, so the growth in membership is also quite impressive, unsurprising. But I don't, there are very few, there are a number of structures in Williamsport that can claim to be 150 years older, older, and very few organizations. It's a remarkable achievement to overcome, I think, human, human nature and continue an organization and a group of people for that long, working toward the same goal and working to help both each other and the community. So, we really appreciate it, all of the effort that all of you have put into it and all the effort that all of, all those who've gone before you. Malcolm Muir sticks out, of course, particularly in my mind, because I was fortunate enough to know him, but we have had a number of remarkable lawyers and judges in the area, and we have been fortunate, and I think that that is in large part thanks to a solid organization that can help to support those endeavors. Thank you.
I would also just say thank you for your service. It's not often that people, unfortunately, it's not often that people look favorably on lawyers, you know? But it is an association such as yourself that calls lawyers to that higher standard because your job is invaluable to an orderly society, and so, we are thankful for that, that call, so to speak, and that desire to raise the bar for yourselves and others in your field. And so, we thank you for that, and we truly do honor you today for that. Thank you.
I just want to quickly thank everybody again for the service that's been provided. Certainly, any, any body of work that has that kind of longevity and produces the individuals that we see in front of us is worth commending, and I'm grateful to be a part of a body that gets a chance to formally recognize that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Same thing. I'll just echo everybody's sentiments, say thank you and congratulations.
And if there are no further comments or questions, one thing I'll say is there'll be a reception immediately following this meeting in which all the lawyer jokes will be told.
We'll skip that.
Because I bet you know the best ones. No, I think, well, speaking specifically about my time on council and relating to different members of the association, Law Association, I can say that every single one of them have acted professionally with high levels of ethics and have sought to, of course, represent the interests that they are slated to represent, but also to hold, to do that in a respectful way, in a way that helps to maintain the interests of the city even if the role is an adversarial one. There's never been a situation where attorneys have interacted with the city in any way other than honorable, and I very much appreciate that because we, those of us who are not students of the law have to rely upon the guidance that we receive and the advice that we receive from not only our attorneys, but the attorneys that we interact with, from all the parties that we deal with. And so, not even on a personal level, but purely on a city government level, I think that that has represented the profession well and represented the association well. So, thank you for that piece as well. So, if there are no other comments or questions, then I'll ask Mrs. Frank for the vote.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries, so thank you very much. Before we move on to the next item, I should say that the reception that I mentioned has been canceled. Next item on the agenda then is resolution authorizing the Cohen Law Group to approve an agreement amending the zoning ordinance. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing a professional service agreement with the Cohen Law Group to draft a zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of wireless facilities.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Second.
Here a motion in a second. Mr. Nar, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson and members of council. What I present to you this evening is a resolution authorizing professional services agreement with the Cohen Law Firm to draft a zoning ordinance amendment to the regulation of wireless communications. Several, approximately about several months ago, I began having conversation with Verizon Wireless with their interest in leasing the city's facilities throughout, well, leasing facilities throughout the city. And during that process, I reached out to Chris Cooley, our IT, and kind of let him know that we're basically in conversations with Verizon as far as leasing these facilities. And after a couple of conversations with Chris, he recommended that we reach out, and he did reach out to the law, the Cohen Law Firm. They do specialize in wireless communications. Our zoning ordinance is very antiquated and old and needs updated in many different ways. What this will allow us to do, it will authorize us a not to exceed amount of $5,500 drafting of the zoning ordinance, as well as an as-needed consultation of $500 to $750 in addition to the $5,500. It did go through our finance, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mealy.
Yes, this did come before finance, and finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Just to be clear, I think, because I've, we discussed this in finance and I've heard it elsewhere, the services that will be provided, well, actually, perhaps you could go into a little more detail, Mr. Nar, about the services that will be provided by this firm. They'll be, they'll be updating the, our existing ordinances.
Right.
They'll be, anyway, why don't you tell us a little bit more?
Well, as you can, as you know, throughout society, basically, the need to update and basically request that extra five-speed G wireless services as far as that. In doing so, they need to basically not only use the larger towers that basically can go out into an area, but for the more dense areas such as your city areas, these smaller towers will allow them the ability to move us into the 5G. So, what, with them drafting this ordinance, it's to protect the city as well as serve and help the city obtain the faster technologies. These smaller cells are probably, towers are probably going to be about two feet. And again, what the Cohen Law Firm does is they specialize in that. They have worked with other municipalities, Gettysburg, Wilkes-Barre, some of the other regions. I know State College just recently went through this process, and again, they have these small cell towers, and what they'll be, where they will be located are on top of our signals, on top of our light infrastructures and things of that nature. And again, like I said, what the Cohen Law Firm is going to do is protect the city's investment as far as what they have the ability to do, not only from Verizon Wireless, but when other entities come forth and say, hey, we want to enter into lease agreements and have our towers put in in those areas. And again, they, they specialize in the wireless facilities. I know the IT side of it, Chris Cooley could probably give you a little bit more better detail or information than what I can, but again, our zoning ordinance is very antiquated and outdated, and this will allow us, it'll protect us as far as what our rights are, what we can have within the city. The FCC also did come down, and they have a set of guidelines, and with that guidelines, they're saying they're limiting the ability that we can ask for these fees of not to exceed $275 per unit, okay? And again, what the law firm will do is enable us to protect the city as well as help us serve the city.
Thank you, Gary. I guess, so the concern, I think, somewhat within our finance committee meeting was that, of course, this firm specializes in writing precisely these ordinances, but these ordinances therefore exist out there in the world, and why couldn't we just take somebody else's? But, but the gist of the scope of work provided to us by the Cohen Law, Law Group was that it's more about making an ordinance that very specifically, that both complies with current FCC standards and specifically serves the needs of our community and not someone else's. That is to say, whether we want to build in restrictions on what towers can look like in residential neighborhoods, in, you know, in the CBD, in our historic district, all of that basically is transmitted from the administration to the Cohen Law Group, who then works with us to make certain that the ordinance actually says, it actually serves the city to the best that it can. And, and, you know, there is the added bonus of a little bit of revenue because the, you know, permitting and then basically leasing of the city facilities allows us to recognize what, we estimate somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000 a year, which is great and which will, of course, pay off the $6,000 initial investment. But, but primarily, I think, given the nature of the technology, given the complicated, yeah, given how complicated the technology is and how difficult it would be for us to draft an ordinance that fell within FCC guidelines, and given this particular firm's expertise in the, in the area and the fact that they've served, we've consulted with both Gettysburg and Wilkes-Barre, I think you said, Mr. Nar?
Correct.
That they serve both those communities well. We, the finance committee forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation and some discussion, I think, and the only further note would be some discussion about who within the administration, and I believe it's Mr. Cooley and Mr. Nar, would be the primary points of contact for the law firm, because we know that the ordinance, of course, will only be as good as we ask them to make it, and consequently, even though we're hiring someone to do some of the legwork and some of the legalese, we still need to provide enough information and enough input to wind up with an ordinance that suits the city. So, Mr. Nar and Mr. Cooley will be the primary points of contact, but even at the finance committee, I know I was talking about, do we want to see these facilities in the public right of way in terms of on major city streets? Would we rather see them in alleys? You know, what are our concerns moving forward with overhead utilities in general, and if we're going to add to those, how do we want to see, how do we want to add to those? Where do we want those additions to be? So, I think all of those are things that we should be putting some thought into if we're, if we're drafting an ordinance that allows us to control precisely those things. And so, I would suggest, I suppose, that all of council put some thought into that as we're, as we're working on this ordinance and give any feedback that we might have to Mr. Nar, so that, so that he can hopefully work, work to incorporate that into our new piece of legislation.
And during that working process, we are going to basically work with Adam Winder because he does know where all the, where all the pools and things of that nature are, and eventually, it will benefit streets and parks down the road, once, once we do enter into an agreement with Verizon Wireless.
Oh, yeah, that's related to the streetlights.
Great.
Our, our streetlights are currently connected by antiquated wiring that Mr. Winder says runs in part in wooden tubing, streetlight to streetlight?
Correct.
Yeah. Traffic signals have to be all the, internet, so each traffic signal species, you're controlled on that. And currently, the wire is ancient. And with the new traffic signal systems, you can actually go wireless using cellular. Downtown, the cellular device can't actually reach out because of all the buildings, so these towers would greatly help us.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Winder, for clarifying. Anyway, yeah, so it has the potential to, to serve the city in a number of ways, and we also learned that our stormwater infrastructure is not the only thing underground that is severely outmoded, apparently.
So, it's wooden conduit underground?
Mm-hmm.
That seems smart.
Around electrical wires.
If that's everything from finance, then other comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on, Mr. Allison, on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda then is a resolution authorizing PennDOT to request railroad crossing upgrades. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing PennDOT to request railroad crossings upgrades at two crossings on Trenton Avenue, City of Williamsport, from the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Second.
Here a motion in a second. Mr. Winder, how are you this evening?
Not bad. How about you?
Good.
Thank you. This resolution is to authorize PennDOT to act on behalf, on behalf of the City of Williamsport to implement new railroad crossing arms. It's a similar resolution as the one I brought forward last year, no cost to the city. These railroad crossings would be put in place, the area of Trenton Avenue around Penn Recycling. There's currently no arms that come down, and due to the There's currently no arms that come down, and due to the Fourth Street project, they're now detouring people on Trenton Avenue to get to Newberry. So it's definitely not the safest scenario, but it's definitely a good thing. As I said, no cost to the city, it just allows PennDOT to act on our behalf with the PUC. And this was reviewed by Public Works and passed on with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Katz.
Yes, this, this has come to Public Works. I think a lot of this also started with the quiet zone.
Yes.
And this is, you know, progressed in different areas, and I don't remember now.
Arch Street, Maynard Street have all been upgraded. And the final ones will be Trenton Avenue, Wahoo Drive, and also Antlers Lane.
And then that'll be it? This'll take care of all?
That'll be it for the city, yep.
And this really is like, because of Fourth Street, the Fourth Street project, planning ahead for these, which is vitally important for the safety of everybody. But it's been interesting, the, the process of, of how this has gone for, I think it's been about four years?
Yes.
Since the quiet zone?
Yep.
And it's taken this long for everything to progress to where it is. And we did pass this with a positive recommendation.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williams?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda then is a war, a resolution awarding electrical contract for the fire station. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution awarding the electrical contract for the Walnut Street Fire Station project.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution?
A moment.
Second.
Here a motion a second. Mr. Winder?
This resolution is to authorize the award of an electrical contract which pertains to an upgraded natural gas-powered generator. We had one electrical company bid on this project in the amount of $82,700 on April 12th. At that time, we put everything out to bid with specifications given to us by Chief Heckman. Letty Electric actually contacted PP&L to see what the actual need was for the fire station, and we found that we could actually reduce the size of the generator. Am I saying that right, Dave? So with that, it was proposed that we could actually save some money on the electrical contract by doing a cost change deduct, and that would reduce the cost down to $66,000. And this was reviewed by finance and passed on with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, report from finance?
Mm-hmm. Yep, finance did review this and the, the next item as well, obviously, the general trades contract. And, and the, the totality of the contract with the two items together in the amount of about $126,000 did come in, I think Mr. Winder said, about $6,000 over the budget that we had either hoped for or anticipated, depending on how you look at it. But the good news is that, that the, that when the electrical company that, that got the bid came to actually look at the project, they were of the opinion that we could do with the generator that was a little less, less powerful than the one that we had spec'd out, which gives us the ability to, to bring the project under budget after all, which is terrific. And we had a lengthy discussion at finance about the precise nature of prevailing wage and which prevailing wages applied where this, this contract, because we are, because we are funding, the totality of it from the Community Development Block grant funding falls under Davis Bacon federal prevailing wage requirements, which are slightly lower. But they do still, of course, especially for an area like Williamsport where wages are, are a little lower than, than in a lot of areas, it, it does amplify the cost somewhat whenever we're using federal, state, or city funds to, to do any work. But we, we did have a, a somewhat lengthy discussion with Mr. Winder and Chief Heckman about the, about the specs and about the project, and we forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
One of the things that I think we should explain thoroughly is that the electrical contract for this, we didn't need three bids on this. We only needed one.
Correct, because it was an alternate to the original bid.
It was an alternate bid.
Yes.
Just to clarify that, just in case anybody's asked that.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williams?
Yes, and the resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is resolution awarding the general trades contract. Mr. Winder?
A resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution awarding the general trades contract for the Walnut Street Fire Station project.
Can I have a motion a second to approve that resolution?
A moment.
Second.
Here a motion a second. Now, Mr. Winder?
Nice job trying to keep things moving along.
I'm trying.
This resolution is for the general trades contract. It involves six new garage doors, six new openers, multiple man doors for the exterior of the building. We did have three bids, and J.C. Orr was the lowest bid in the amount of $44,220. The current garage doors are antiquated. We have a garage door company there probably twice a month repairing them, and the issue is, I mean, when these trucks have to get out, they just have to get out. This was brought before finance and passed on with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy?
Yes, finance did review this and passed it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. As, as Mrs. Katz noted, this, this actually was the prime contract despite being the lower dollar amount and, and consequently is the reason why we only needed, why we didn't need to have three separate bids for the electrical subprime. The, the project, right, will in general bring the fire department at least somewhere into the 20th century, I understand, which is, which is a good location. And I think will, will take care of, of just a handful, not, not to mention it's supposedly going to give us a bunch of spare parts for other garage doors elsewhere in the city that are also operating off of motors that are a little bit antiquated, and you can no longer source parts for. So by, by, by getting new garage doors at the fire department, we will have further motor pieces to, to utilize elsewhere if need be, which just shows you how resourceful our, our department heads can be when it comes to, when it comes to, to, to working with what we've got on hand to, to keep the city running. Once again, finance forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
We, we're taking care of the fire house at this point. We've been working on this for quite some time. I know the chief has been waiting for this for a long time, but I, I do have a question to ask. Did you get any results on the elevator for City Hall yet?
We have not received anything from Labor and Industry yet, and I believe the bids are going out. Chris can tell me if I'm correct, on Monday, they get?
Yes, the package will be together on Monday, and Adam and I should have plans tomorrow.
We do have a representative here from the Center of Independent Living that is really interested in this. And the other thing that the Center for Independent Living is really interested in is Memorial Park. They, they sent information on the mulch, what, for what should be done in, in the park itself, if it so be, go that far. We are all, I think, I think we can honestly say we're, we're against doing anything at this point because of the cost factor here. But when you read what is required, if, if you put mulch down, according to the center, wood chips require daily raking to assure the surface is uniform and six inches deep. Who do we have that's going to be available to do something like that? We don't have people that are available for that.
We are not certified to install that.
And that's the, that's the other part of the equation here. I think what we all want to see with the playground is that we would like to have certified inspection, and not only that, but we'd also like to have the ADA inspect also to tell us what needs to be done. And I think we're all questioning this because the cost factor, we would really like to just see a green space at this point, and because we are going after funding for this for a, an ADA-compliant playground. And right now, to even put a Band-Aid on the playground equipment is, is just that, a playground, and it's still going to be very serious, a serious injury can occur because the, the equipment itself is not safe.
Right.
And do we have, and has there been any, any answers with this?
Today, we determined that we are going to contract a third-party playground equipment inspector to come in. I think, Joe, we were shooting for hopefully next week, beginning of the following week.
Whatever destiny it's going to be, we're hoping for next week, late in the week.
And then I'm going to let Mr. Girardi discuss what he brought to light with the ADA compliance.
Yeah, and after that, I will have a certified handicap inspector, because nobody in my department is certified in handicap, to come through to make sure it is accessible, has a accessible route, to make sure that the material is there. We're also going to have this inspector who comes up to check the equipment to see if there's things that can be done to the actual surface there to get through for a year until we can come up with some money to do it. But that's our intent. We don't want to have anything, anybody out on there unless it's certified both ways through the inspector of the, of the equipment and the handicap inspector.
I do have to tell you, Tim, Tim is here from the Center for Independent Living, and they have been coming to the Public Works meeting, and this has been a huge concern of theirs. Because once, and I, people have to understand, this playground was ADA-certified many years ago. And once it's certified, even though you take things apart and you're going to put another playground, it has to be ADA-certified.
That's correct.
Again, you cannot take that away. Am I correct in?
Correct.
Yes, that's, yes, that's correct.
And so we've been, you know, they've been coming to the Public Works meetings for quite some time with this and very concerned with everything that's going on in that area. So this is, you know, very important to us as a city to fulfill these, these commitments to all of our citizens. So I'm happy that we're going to have somebody come in and, and look at this, you know, which has been a problem.
What we did was we had our staff meet, and after the meeting, we had a meeting. And that was what we came up with our game plan. We don't want any citizen or child or anybody or anyone who's, who's disabled not to be able to use that park properly. So that's, that's our game plan at this point.
For letting us go and find out some more information. I know we got a little bit off track here.
While, while you're talking about that, we, we do need to get back to the fire hall here in a minute, but it made me think of it as...
I apologize for that.
No, 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 it's okay. But it made me think to ask a follow-up question. So I assume there'll be some expense for the inspector that you just talked about?
From my understanding, it was around, what, $500, Joe?
And so that's within the discretion of, of your departments?
That's correct.
To be able to do that. And it, to me, there are really two concerns about moving forward. One is the one that was discussed here. Clearly, the playground equipment needs to be safe for all users, and then it needs to maintain the compliance that it was designed for, for ADA purposes. And, and you have a plan here that sounds like it will help achieve that. The other thing that I was, in addition to that, concerned about was that anything that we might do in the next month or two for the summer season before, you know, the third week of May would be, would be wasted funds, and, and we don't have funds to waste as a city, if in the end, it's not certifiably safe and ADA-compliant, and we're going to have to take out and then put in again. And so, and trying to rush, I would be concerned if we tried to rush reopening the playground by expending city tax dollars if, in the end, that money would be wasted because it's just a Band-Aid that we're going to have to undo and redo once we have a, a better long-term plan, starting, you know, say, January of next year. So to me, of course, having the inspector $500, that makes sense, because we would need to do that now and, and probably with a long-term plan again, because we'll learn things about what we need to do in putting a long-term plan together from the inspection. But anything that would be, you know, patching materials or putting in mulch that is not, it's not possible to be compliant, or, you know, sort of temporary fixes to the equipment, none of that seems like a good expenditure of the city's taxpayer dollars. And you're both, well, you're, one of you's nodding and one of you's shaking your head, but in both cases, I'm interpreting what you're saying as in agreement with what I indicated.
That's correct. And, and the $500 is for the actual inspection of the equipment there and the surface. I'm hoping to have a handicap inspector just come through for me and look through and give me some opinions on what needs to be done, so there shouldn't really be a charge on the handicap inspection.
Okay, that's great. And I think that's an appropriate response because, or a appropriate step, even if, with a little bit of an expense there, because we'll learn things about what must be done when, when we do a comprehensive plan there. So, thank you for that. Are there any other comments while we're off track on Memorial Park before we get back on track? Ms. Mealy?
Just that I think that we can't under, I can't underline enough our dual responsibilities. A, if we're, if we, if we are, and we are, pursuing a grant to install completely new facilities in Memorial Park next, next summer. And we are, we know that, that the funding that would be, we, we believe, but we will soon find out, that the funding that would be required to keep Memorial Park operational this year and safe for, for all, for all users, but especially for those users who are handicapped, you know, we can't justify, I don't think, for the Williamsport taxpayers to, to set aside any funding to, to bring that park up to its use, up to a usable state this summer if, if we know that we are, are hoping to have that funding in place next year to, to do a true and complete reworking of the, of the structure. But we'll see what, what the outcome of the inspection is, because I think that really will be telling. And we'll look forward to, to hearing about that from both of you when, when, when the facilities are inspected. But it would be, I think, I, I don't think that I could justify that to any of the constituents who, who reach out to me on a regular basis. You know, it simply is, if, if, if the, if we weren't able to, to find the funding to replace the, the park equipment this year in totality, then, then it may perhaps turn out that we are simply best to, to wait until we have the funding in place next year and move, move on the project then.
Mr. Noviello?
I would echo those same comments, and I know that we, we had the people from the Center of Independent Living here at the last meeting, the impression I got, and Tim can qualify my comment if, if he would, that they were inclined to be patient about this as well and to make sure that things were as they should be. Obviously, we're talking probably most respects here, children, safety's got to be the primary concern. We've got to get this right the first time. So for me, the idea of backing off our time, readdressing and looking at this in a new reevaluated kind of a way seems to be the first best step to making the best decision here. So I'm, I'm inclined to go with the flow. Tim, if you have something you need to say?
Please, is the microphone usable, or should, or would you prefer to use Mrs. Frank's?
No, we've got it.
Just so we can get you on the record. Need to figure out how to lengthen that cord.
Thank you. Just wanted to make the council aware that the literature we provided for you is not to sell you on a, a surface, it's just to give you an idea of what ADA approve, and we understand, we understand that patience is definitely a virtue in this matter, and we are very patient and we really appreciate your input and everything that you're doing to work on this situation, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and, and helping us become informed on what, what best practices are is important. So at least I never interpreted it as you trying to sell a particular product, so thank you for that comment as well. Any other, just to summarize where we are here for a second, we're talking about Memorial Park Playground as a feeder off of a question related to the elevator, which is a feeder off of garage doors at the fire department. So just, so we don't lose track, especially when Mrs. Frank is trying to transcribe all of these, where we are exactly. Mr. Allison?
Looking at the, the whole genesis of the Memorial Playground Project, we've known it's been deteriorating for a while, and I, it's at a point in condition right now, it's probably not getting the high level of use that it was at one time because of the, well, now it isn't at all because the playing surface deteriorated and had to be taken up. And it, it will be an inconvenience not to have it there for now, but when I, just a general count, and I'm not, there may be more, playground... count, and I'm not, there may be more, playgrounds in the city, I come up with at least six between city and some that are on school district properties. There are options available within city limits. Brandon Park, Young's Woods has a playground in the East End, Newberry Park. It's spread out throughout the city. There's Los Park nearby to that, so people can travel there. And we're grateful that this plan has been identified for a while, that we could, I believe it was Penn Strategies that identified the grant, and we decided to go ahead with that as a body. And the process is underway. We don't need to get this up and running with a Band-Aid. We have other options. And I think when you look what's on the table, we'll have a revitalized Memorial Park Playground. We're going to have a revitalized Brandon Park Playground. And in the school district, Stevens, the Stevens Project is going to have a brand-new playground. So we'll have a temporary discontinuance, but there's going to be abundance of new and safe playgrounds throughout the city. So we don't need to do a knee-jerk panic reaction in Memorial Park. I really don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. I think you're right. And several of us were able to make it to the Rotary and Quanus Organizations fundraiser the other night, where they've, if I understand correctly, have made it, raised half of the funds necessary for that privately funded playground at Stevens that will add to our accessible recreational assets in our community. So those organizations are committed and are doing a great job getting close to the finish line, I think. Other comments on Memorial Park? Other comments on elevators? Other comments then on garage doors and the general trades contract for City Hall Fire Station? Ms. Mealy?
Just to thank you once again to our department heads for taking the lead on several projects here, and making do with very little in all, on all fronts.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution related to that last one.
Where were we? Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
And Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz? Yes. Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve Transportation Alternatives Aid Letter for Pathways to Health Phase Four Grado. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution to approve a Transportation Alternatives Program Federal Aid Letter of Amendment for the Pathways to Health Phase Four Project.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Here a motion in a second. How are you this evening?
Good, thank you. About yourself?
Very well.
The resolution before you authorizes the mayor and city controller to electronically sign a letter of amendment with PennDOT, awarding approximately a hundred thousand dollars in additional funding for the Pathway to Health Phase Four Project. In October 2018, council approved Transportation Alternatives Program Federal Aid Reimbursement Agreement with PennDOT for approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. When PennDOT was preparing the bid packages for the project, they estimated that the cost would be around nine hundred, a difference of one hundred thousand dollars. They were able to secure an additional one hundred thousand dollars to bring the total pot of money available to the nine hundred thousand dollars. And that's what the letter of amendment is authorizing our acceptance of that additional one hundred thousand dollars. Since then, the bids have been sent out. There were three bidders on the Pathway Phase Four Project, with Wallnietz Construction being the low bidder. Their bids came in approximately one hundred thousand dollars under our new contract amount or our new reimbursement amount with PennDOT. However, we're asking the amendment to be awarded and potentially used for future phases of a pathway project, along with agreeing with PennDOT's decision to award the bid contract to Wallnietz Construction.
Thank you.
This was reviewed by Public Works.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz?
Yes. With this project, as he said, Wallnietz is the lowest bidder coming in. There will be eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars for the change order, did you say at one point? Or did I write this wrong?
There will be available, we're estimating around eighty thousand dollars for change orders. If not, they'll be eligible to be utilized for future projects.
Okay. And other than that, we're going on with Phase Four at this point.
Correct.
And I don't think we're still going to be finished, are we?
That...
We still have more that's coming up.
Those questions better for...
Grado, Phase Five, Six, Seven, Eight, I think are down the line.
Just from now on, they're all Phase Grado.
Right, exactly. So other than that, we're progressing as we should be. And this was passed with the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from other members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz? Yes. Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have the Ad Hoc Residency Committee meeting minutes of January 30th, 2019, the Public Safety meeting minutes of January 26th, 2019, the Historic Preservation Minutes of January 22nd, 2019, the Veterans Memorial Park Commission meeting minutes of March 4th, 2019, and the controllers' report for March 2019. Is there a motion in a second to approve those, except for those for filing?
So moved.
Here a motion in a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz? Yes. Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are accepted. Next item on the agenda then is announcements. I need to announce that the Finance Committee this week had an executive session immediately following their regularly scheduled meeting to discuss legal matters. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, May 23rd at 7:30 here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include Monday, May 13th at noon, the Planning Commission, at 4:00 p.m. the Recreation Commission, on Tuesday, May 14th at 3:30 p.m.
Mrs. Frank, we haven't had any requests, have we?
We have one for May 28th, but...
Not the 14th?
Not the 14th, yes.
So there will not be a ERC meeting on the 14th? On Thursday, May 16th at 10:30 a.m., zoning hearing board, 4:00 p.m. Board of Health, on Tuesday, May 21st at 10 a.m., the Blighted Property Review Committee, at 1:00 p.m. the Finance Committee, 2:30 p.m. Public Works, 3:30 p.m. Public Safety, and at 6:30 p.m. Harb meeting. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there any comments from members of council? Hearing not, well, I guess I would say we do have a primary election coming up within the next two weeks on May 21st, so I encourage all the citizens of Williamsport and beyond to get out and vote and have your voice heard in the Republican and Democratic primaries. Otherwise, I will move on to see if there are any comments from the administration. Mr. Girardi?
Yeah, just two things. One is, I'm to piggyback off what you were saying. This year's been pretty good, but political signs can't be in this right away between the sidewalk and the curb. Our guys are going out this week, and if they're on our property, we are pulling them and putting them down by my office. And, because we don't want to go out and have everybody doing the same thing, I'm not going to have my guys go out and put them in the proper location. We pull them and bring them in. Sizes of signs too, some of them are getting too big. I believe, Gary, they're three by four, maximum size, unless it's on a billboard. And if it's on a billboard, it could be the size of the billboard, okay? Also, for some reason, we have a lot, I think my guys were out, they're out today and they're out, they're going to go out tomorrow, grass is a big issue right now. So any of the residents are out there and they have a neighbor who isn't cutting his grass, it's over ten, twelve inches, give us a call, we'll go out. We're also having my guys go out to their areas, which I call, we're down, four guys, we have four different areas for them to do, and they go through that whole entire area and put on door tags and notices. And at this point, talking to them, we have about eighty-two to ninety door tags in one day.
Oh, wow.
Okay. And then one of the biggest things, they say, the rain's been stopping them. It's kind of funny, though, the rain's only stopping that one person because everybody else in the box, grass is cut, okay? So it must just rain on that property. So I just wanted to get that out there in case the residents are out there and they're having some problems with their neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate those announcements. If there's nothing else from the administration, then any comments from the general public? Please come up and state your name and address for the record, as you well know.
My name is Bruce Hoffman, 1000 Cherry Street, Williamsport. Good evening, Dr. Williamson, members of council. You probably got an article I wrote last week about one of your predecessors, and I'd just like to read that, if you'll indulge me again, into the record.
Thank you.
You may have heard that Constance M. Snyder of Montoursville passed away on May 1st, 2019, but you may not know that some fifty years ago, Mrs. Snyder played a pivotal role in Williamsport's city government history. Constance M. Snyder was one of the first five city council members under the then-brand-new mayor-council Plan A form of government that went into effect in January 1972. She had been elected in November 1971 along with Dr. Edwin R. Gearhart, Dr. Randall F. Hippel, E. Earl Miller, and William E. Nichols. Holdovers William L. Painter and John G. Good continued from their earlier terms. In fact, Mrs. Snyder was the top vote-getter. She and her fellow council members, along with the new mayor, John R. Coder, took the oath of office at a ceremony in the Salvation Army Citadel Building directly behind the then-Williamsport City Council on Pine Street. By tradition of having received the highest number of votes in the election, three thousand six hundred and fifty-five, Constance M. Snyder chaired the very first meeting of the newly sworn council for a brief time before William E. Nichols was nominated and elected to be president. However, Mrs. Snyder's mark on Williamsport actually began in the spring of 1969, when she and local attorney Daniel F. Nittle approached city council, then under the commission form, to ask that a question be placed on the ballot to study the form of government. Having gone through a similar government study process in 1963 and 64, council was a little bit reluctant to propose another study and denied the request, stating, "A charter study will cost the city money, and people who want a study should be willing to sign a petition to say that they want the money spent." This did not stop Mrs. Snyder and Mr. Nittle. Now, it is interesting to note that the petition signature requirement under the 1957 Optional Third Class City Charter law was significantly higher than under the later 1972 Home Rule Charter and Optional Plans Law. The signatures of fifteen percent of the registered voters or 2,563 names were required under the charter law. Mr. Nittle and Mrs. Snyder led a group that obtained more than 3,300 signatures. At the same election at which the charter study question was approved, Constance M. Snyder was also elected, along with Mr. Nittle and seven others, to serve as charter commissioner. When she ran for that position, her job title was listed as housewife. At the first organizational meeting of the charter commission, Mr. Nittle was elected chairman and Mrs. Snyder secretary. In late April of 1970, the Williamsport branch of the American Association of University Women sponsored a debate on the pros and cons of the charter commission's recommendation. On the panel representing the work of the charter commission were Daniel F. Nittle and Constance M. Snyder. After the referendum to switch to mayor-council Plan A form of government was approved by the voters in the primary election of May 1970, it was recommended that a transition committee be formed to ensure a smooth process. Constance M. Snyder was named to be on this five-person transition committee representing the League of Women Voters. This transition committee effectively drafted the framework for the administrative code and organizational structure which became the foundational basis under which the city of Williamsport would begin to operate. Even with all of her efforts, Mrs. Snyder continued to be involved in the city of Williamsport by running, as I said, for one of the five council seats available under the new form in 1971. With all that she did in the late 1960s and early 1970s, and being the first woman ever elected to serve on Williamsport City Council, it seems more than fair to say that Constance M. Snyder was a trailblazer in Williamsport city government history. May she ever be remembered as such? Thank you.
Thank you. Very interesting. Any other comments from the general public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Here a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.